Good afternoon. I think we'll get started. I want to call to order the November 13th, 2017, regular meeting of the Minneapolis Planning Commission. My name is John Slack. I'm the Vice President. I will preside over this meeting in the absence of the President today. I'm joined by Commissioners Gagnon walking up here, Kronzer, Magrino, Sweetsie, Loopke Pierre, and Rockwell. At this time, please turn off any phones or pagers. So first order of business is to approve action items from the October 30th, 2017 meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Action is approved. Next order of business is to approve the agenda for this meeting here today. We'll work from the agendas that you can find out in the hallway. First off, we're going to sort out what items will be discussed, and then subsequently, what items we'll put onto the consent agenda. So item number one, 2868 West River Road Parkway. It's a minor subdivision application. Unless somebody has wants to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation for this item, we'll put it on consent. You'd like to speak to this item? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll get to that portion of the meeting, but you do want to speak to item one, correct? Okay. All right. Item number two, Sleep Number signs, 1001 Third Avenue South. It's a conditional use permit and two variances, and so we'll put this on consent unless somebody wants to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation. Item number two. Okay, not seeing any. We'll put that on consent. Item number three, Target Field Station Mixed Use Project, 505 Sixth Avenue North. It is a registered land survey, and we'll put this item on consent unless somebody wants to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation for item number three. Not seeing anything. That will go to consent. Item number four, NICO Products, 2929 First Avenue South and 112, 118, and 122 East Lake Street. It is a rezoning, two variances, preliminary plat, and vacation of a portion of the alley. We will discuss item number four. Item number five is 1201 West Broadway. It is a conditional use permit, and we'll put that on consent unless somebody wants to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation for item number five. Not seeing any. We'll put that on consent. Item number six, 3823 Thirty First Street West. It is a five variances and a site plan review. That item will be continued. Item number seven, the Lewis, 3001 Fourth Street Southeast. It is a rezoning, a conditional use permit for maximal building height, three variances, and site plan review. We'll put that item on consent unless somebody wants to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation for item number seven. All right, not seeing any. We'll put that on consent. Item number eight, zoning text, code text amendment will be returned. And then item number nine, Van White Boulevard stationary plan will be discussed. All right, so the proposed agenda for our meeting today, items two, three, five, and seven will go on consent unless somebody wants to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation for those items. And then items one, four, and nine will be discussed today. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the proposed agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All right, agenda is approved. Next item, Committee of the Whole consent agenda. We had two items from the November 2nd, 2017 Committee of the Whole. The first item was a land sale, 415, 417 Taylor Street Northeast, and the second item was a land easement, 1729 Sixth Street Northeast. The recommended motion at the Committee of the Whole was to approve both of those items that they are consistent with the Minneapolis Plan. So can I have a motion for that? Motion seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. All right, on to the public hearings. First, we'll act on those items that will be continued and/or returned, and then we'll focus on the consent agenda, and then after consent agenda, we'll get to the items that are going to be discussed today. So items to be continued. Can I have a motion to continue item number six to the December 4th, 2017 meeting? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Item is continued. We have an item to be returned, so can I have a motion to return item number eight? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any abstentions? Item is continued, or item is returned, sorry. All right, so we're on the consent agenda. We're going to open the public hearing right now for those items on the consent agenda. Those items are two, three, five, and seven. So at this point, if anybody would like to speak to any of these items, whether in opposition to or modifying staff recommendations, please say so now. Not seeing any? We'll close the public hearing for the consent items. Can I have a motion to approve staff recommendations for items two, three, five, and seven? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. We are on to items for discussion. Our first item that we're going to hear today is item number one, 2868 West River Parkway,
Good evening, members of the Commission. This is a minor subdivision request at 2868 West River Parkway. It's located on West River Parkway, also bordered by Dorman Avenue and 29th Street East. As you can see, it's a through lot and aerial image here. Historically, they were all through lots all along this block, but as you can see over the years, they've been divided up. The two parcels immediately to the north have been divided in half, and then again along Dorman Avenue into two additional parcels. As I mentioned, proposal is to subdivide the lot. They are intending to build a new single-family dwelling that will be fronting onto Dorman Avenue and reconfiguring the driveway for the existing single-family dwelling to come off of 29th Street East. You can see the proposed new driveway here in the survey. It would fall roughly in line with the existing driveway that is across the street on 29th Street East. Staff found that the request complied with all subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance regulations, and comprehensive plan. It would not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties. There wouldn't be any hazards created. These sites are both suitable for development. There will be no nonconformities created with the subdivision requirement. Each lot will be roughly 9,400 square feet each, so large enough for a sizable dwelling to be located on the lot, and that it is, there's existing utilities adequate for the proposed development. So staff is recommending approval of the minor subdivision, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? Not seeing any? Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing for this item. First, like to hear from the applicant. If the applicant could come up to the -- and then please state your name and your address.
My name is Kevin Ruther. It's R-E-U-T-H-E-R. The address is 2868 West River Parkway.
Did you want to provide any additional comments?
I think Stephanie did a good job. You know, we're planning to subdivide the lot, and hopefully we'll build a house on it. This is my partner, Jerry Tyrrell. We've lived in South Minneapolis for 20 or so years. We'll engage an architect, and hopefully we'll build anything offensive. We're sort of downsizing. It'll be a house that we can live in, and so.
Great, thank you for your comments. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay. At this point, we can open comments up to the public. If you have any, like to speak, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address.
Jennifer Pereira, 2853 Forty Fourth Avenue South. Definitely nothing personal against my new neighbors. We moved in about a week before them, so essentially, we have the house that's just across the street from Dorman, and it really is a selfish reason that I am against the zoning. It's a busy corner. It's adding more to the corner. You know, part of the reason I bought my house, I paid a hefty price for my house, was that there was no house there, and I can see the river. Also, that the River Road house was worth more than mine, so I look at comps, and I'm a little concerned that now I'm going to have two houses that are worth less than mine, that have a better view and are closer to the river, therefore, you know, basically just lowering my comps. So just concerned value-wise and also busy-wise in the way of the street corner, but.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Could I also ask a quick question? I know of a few people who have emailed comments in. Are those read, or how does that work? You do?
Yeah, we have the comments in front of us, so we'll, we read them prior to the start of the meeting. Commissioners, any questions for this speaker? Seeing none, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this topic? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Ethan Parsons. I live at 2847 Thirty First Avenue South. My wife and I, we walk past this lot frequently when we go on walks, and we've always thought, gosh, what a great place for a house. So we're really happy to see what we're going to be building here. We're looking into our neighborhood. And yeah, I would think that in a city that needs to have more housing, that we would willingly and enthusiastically accept this additional house into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for this speaker? Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for this item. Commissioners, we have one item to approve here. Would anybody like to make a motion or start a discussion about this item?
I'll move staff recommendation to approve the subdivision.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any further discussions?
I'll say just briefly, you know, I understand the concerns with the views. There is not a right to view, which is not something that we are able to consider, and even if weren't subdivided, if someone were to redevelop the house on this parcel, they could move where it is on the parcel, as long as it's consistent with the zoning. So she could have a house built there even without subdividing it. So, you know, I understand your concerns, but I think it is the appropriate thing to do, and in a city where we're trying to build our density a bit, this is one small move.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Not seeing any. Will a clerk please take role?
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Loopke Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you very much. Item number, next item up is item number four, NICO Products, 2929 First Avenue South and 112, 118, 122nd East Lake Street, and staff is Hillary DeVorek. Commissioner Kronzer, I don't know if specifically you wanted to ask questions regarding this, or would you like staff to make a presentation?
Be a quick presentation and.
Sure. So this is a collaborative project that's being done between Metro Transit, Hennepin County, the city of Minneapolis, and the Minnesota Department of Transportation. This is in relation to the large 35W access project, which has local and then regional implications, obviously to our local system. The highway project that will take place is a new exit ramp southbound to Lake Street from 35W, which is going to require the demolition of the existing Good Grocer building as the street will be widened, and part of that property will be used for the widened access ramp. What that also does is that closes two curb cuts that currently have access out onto Stevens. One is the NICO Products parking lot, and then one is a public alley. Both of those curb cuts are all curb cuts on Stevens at this point because it will be after the exit ramp from 35W needs to be closed. And so what happens currently are the loading docks for NICO Products are here as part of the project, and because these curb cuts are all getting closed, the loading docks will now be oriented north-south, if you will, facing Lake Street. So the trucks need to use what was the Good Grocer site for maneuvering into and out of this loading dock, as all parties have said that there can be no access to Stevens Avenue for this site. So to make all of that happen, the applications are before you, and the applications that are required to make that all happen, I should say, are before you tonight. And as a result, then will be the, a new parking lot, if you will, up towards the corner of Stevens and Lake Street. And I think we recognize that this isn't the ideal situation, but this is what needs to happen in order to maintain the business in this location and make the access project work. You can see that, and I apologize, this is very small. This is that newly created parking area, if you will, at Stevens and Lake Street. There will be a seven-foot landscape buffer along Stevens and Lake Street. And then we do have added conditions of approval tonight to make sure that the parking lot itself is in compliance with the 530 Chapter for screening around a parking lot. And so we have, we have added conditions of approval of the number of trees and shrubs and landscape, and we're also adding a condition that the decorative metal fence that is proposed remain as part of the project. It's also my understanding that that fence will be replicated in other locations along Lake Street and have been as part of the larger Lake Street project that happened sometime in the past. So those are the applications, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Thank you, Hillary. Can you specifically talk about the two trees your proposing, or staff recommendations are for conditions of approval along East Lake Street?
What do you mean?
The two trees.
I mean, we're recommending that there be two trees somewhere in this landscaped area here.
Okay. Do you have any suggestions about that fence? It seems like the sidewalk maybe isn't quite wide enough, and there's grass between the sidewalk and the decorative fence. Is that what I'm reading correctly there?
Fence line is, my understanding follows this.
Right.
Here, and so the trees would be between the fence and then that first.
There's some drawings that show the fence tight to the parking. That's fine.
Actually, I think you're right. I'm sorry. Yep.
Then the alley curb cut on some drawings looks like it's level with the street. Is that intended to be a standard city apron at the alley as it enters Lake Street?
That is a good question. I may let the applicant answer that question. This will go through PDR and through the Public Works.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very large radius turn for that curb cut, and it's, that's not a typical design. Do you have a drawing that shows the location of the standards for the mast arms, for the traffic signals, and maybe even the push buttons?
I do not. I don't know if that level of, I mean, that's outside of the scope of the NICO project. That's part of the larger access project. That's, here, we're focusing on everything inside the property line. Those are things that are outside of the property line.
Right. The public sidewalk on these plans looks like it's being built as part of this project.
Per the plans that.
Maybe the applicant can speak to that, because it's part of the congestion at this corner.
Mm-hmm. I just don't know if we can solve that as part of this application.
Just a last quick question. Drive-throughs aren't allowed in I-2, is that correct?
They're not allowed in the PO either.
Perfect.
I don't, I can't, I shouldn't say that they're not allowed in the I-2, but they're not allowed in the PO, and these properties, the ones up front on Lake Street, will remain in the PO.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Do you have, I assume not, because it's not in a packet, and you didn't show it, but a picture of what the fence looks like? And, you know, I think this is, this is in a PO district, and also the corner that we're talking about is the corner that will be the view from the transit station, from a, like, many, many, many million-dollar transit station. And, and we're talking about, you know, at some point, maybe that Kmart block that's just west of here gets redone a bit, and so I think, oh, this is the fence.
Yep, it's the standard decorative metal fence.
So perhaps minimally decorative.
Higher than chain link.
Higher than chain link. Okay. Because I think that that, this is, like, if that's, I, you know, I, well, I guess I'm moving into discussion, so I'll pause my question there.
Any other questions for staff? Not seeing any? Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing for this item. We'd first like to hear from the applicant. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jim Grub, that's spelled G-R-U-B as in boy E. I work with Hennepin County. My office address is actually 1600 Prairie Drive in Medina, not across the street. I'm out in the western part of the Hennepin County. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I am also the project manager that brought together the 35W Transit Access Project and was coordinating with our partners here, the city of Minneapolis, MinDOT, and Metro Transit, to name the partnership that came together for the Transit Access Project. In response to the questions that were tendered, can I just answer them for you? Would that be okay?
Please.
Commissioner Breland was talking about, pardon me, Commissioner, you were talking about the fence condition. The fencing along Lake Street, if you look east and west of the 35W area, has a green decorative fence. The fence that's proposed at this time by, for the NICO Products site is not that fence. At the same time, I'm working with your city staff to put in a special services district for increased landscaping along Lake Street from Blaisdell Avenue over to Fifth. That is the part that was left out when I was involved in the reconstruction of Lake Street from Dupont all the way to the river. We left this segment out for just this purpose because we had to fit the Transit Access project in. So the fence that you see is one that my hope is we will be able to replace with the same type of fence material, that green-looking decorative fence that is along from Dupont over to West River Road, with the exception at this location. I'd offer to, if you take a drive, you'd be able to see right away how it fits in with the whole neighborhood. And then we're also including the potential for additional landscape treatments along this area as part of that special services district. I'm working specifically with Public Works staff on that, and the idea is to work with people on both the east and west side of 35W to create actually a service district on each side. So two different petitions would be coming to the city council on that regard. Now, if I could answer the question regarding the streetlights and the, excuse me, the traffic signals and the APS, those pedestals that are out in the right-of-way. I do not have a picture of it for you, but the design calls for pedestrian ramps both east and west and north and south in that intersection, instead of having one in the center, one wide one, that perhaps a visually impaired person might get disoriented and start traveling at an awkward direction into the intersection. Instead, there will be the one for the east and west, and then the one for the north and south. And so with that in mind, then we will, in fact, have the push buttons on either the pedestals or the posts themselves, lamp, the streetlight poles themselves. I cannot recall, Commissioner, what it was. So then that would properly serve the visually impaired, and it'd have the audible system as the city has been, city public works staff has been placing throughout the city. There was a question about the, the issue of high congestion at that location for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles. Absolutely right. That's kind of a good thing, and from the standpoint of what we're trying to accomplish with the Transit Access Project with that transit station in the middle of Lake Street serving both north, south, and east and west, I can affirm that there will be a good, a fair amount of pedestrian traffic. We are looking to widen the sidewalks on Lake Street through this location. That would be nominally a minimum of 10 feet, and then as you walk further to the west, as we, if we say we just enter, if you will, the Kmart site, there's a proposed bus rapid transit stop at that location for the Lake Street bus rapid transit that would be scheduled to begin service in about '21 or '22. So we do see that there will be quite a number of pedestrians there, but we've widened the sidewalk on Lake Street. If you refer to and look at Stevens Avenue, that sidewalk will be nominally 6 feet. There will be a split sidewalk trail on the east side of Stevens that will be running with that Transit Access Project, and a vast majority of the folks who are pedestrians and bicyclists will be using the west side, not the east side. The east side will still have the sidewalk, however.
Mr. Grub, I think we have a couple more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grub. So have you, have you studied the travel path of the pedestrian from the east side of Stevens west along East Lake Street where it hits that corner? To me, it seems like the sidewalks are doing some pretty sharp angles, and pedestrians like to walk in a straight line. Is there a reason why the, where the curb ramps are in that corner, that they're such a sharp angle with the design of the backs of those sidewalks?
Are you asking about the pedestrian who is walking along the north side of Lake Street, moving westerly from, from, we'll say, the bus stop over to Kmart?
Yes.
Very good. I think your observation in terms of not a clear, straight line is an artifact of what we're trying to do underneath the 35W bridge for the Lake Street Station. I believe that that, the Lake Street sidewalk there is farther to the north than it is when you get to the west side of Stevens. And the reason, Commissioners, that that sidewalk is in fact a bit farther to the north is because we are providing bus dwell area along each of the curb lines of Lake Street because that's where the surface buses will pull off into a place where they can stop. I was under the impression that we did have some bumpouts along Lake Street in the vicinity, in the transit station area, so that we could reduce that crossing as much as possible, but I think it's still a bit to the north of where it is once you get to the west side.
Great, thank you. Do we need to put up a plan, anybody, to see exactly what he's talking about? Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Not seeing any? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll continue the public hearing for anybody else that would like to talk on this item. So if you'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your Not seeing anybody? We can close the public hearing for this item. So Commissioners, we have five items, rezoning, two variances, preliminary plat, and a vacation of a portion of an alley. Does somebody want to make a motion or start the conversation? Commissioner Kronzer?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, the rezoning from C2 to I2. I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, the rezoning from C2 to I2.
Motion is made. Second, any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any. Clerk, we can call the roll.
Dignan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipke Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue?
For the variance to standards, including the three conditions with the addition to the first condition being work with staff to better align the fence with the back of the sidewalk at the corner of Stevens Avenue and East Lake Street.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
I, I'm not going to add this as a condition, but I do want to say that, that I think that we could do better than just a decorative fence, and I mean more than the, the standard for, for Dupont to West River Road. I think that we should think of this corner as kind of an entry point into the city from that Orange Line Transit Station, and that if there's a way to integrate some level of public art in conjunction with the city or through the special services district, or something else that creates more of a sense of, of arrival, that would be worthwhile. I think the, it's, the reconfiguration of this site and having parking on this corner is not ideal, but I understand why it's necessary. And so we kind of have to make the best of something that's not ideal. So that's, to me, the way that we do that. You know, with additional landscaping and a little bit of nicer fence, I think we'll still be kind of left with a suburban feel here, right off of a transit station. And, and it'll take some creativity, and I don't have the answers, but I want to just encourage both city and county staff. And if there's a special services district, that special services district, think about how to really make this a lively and interesting gateway into the city.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. Clerk, please call roll.
Dignan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipke Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue?
To approve staff recommendations for items C, D, and E, the variance for drive-out width, with the one condition, preliminary plat approval, and you approve of the vacancy, vacation of the alley.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any. Clerk, please call roll.
Dignan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipke Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Or Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
So that completes the action on item number four. And the last item we're going to discuss tonight is item number nine, Van White Boulevard Station Area Plan, and staff is Jim Bull.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jack Fires. I'm the manager of long-range planning, and in a moment, I'm going to have Jim give you a detailed presentation of the plan. But I wanted to take a moment first to just give you a very high-level overview of the opportunity here and to make some important acknowledgements. As I think you know from our conversation a month or two ago at the Committee of the Whole, the opportunity here is because of the billion-dollar investment in the Botno Light Rail Transit Line. And so this station plan is focused on development opportunities at Van White, but also because CPED staff have been working very hard on redevelopment opportunities further south in the Bassett Creek Valley area, we decided to extend the project area a bit beyond the normal stationary plan to include that as well. And there's really opportunities shaping up in both places, because this particular part of the city has a large, several large tracts of publicly-owned land, some by CPED, some by MINDOT, some by the Public Housing Authority. So there's really an opportunity here to transform a part of the city and allow for population growth and employment growth. And I want to point out that we have tried to do that in a very sensitive way for the residents who have already made both financial and familial and personal commitments to this part of the city for many, many years. So I want to start off by acknowledging that this effort was really done with the community, with great participation from the community. We weren't able to satisfy every concern, but we have worked very hard to make sure that we have addressed those concerns. There's been participation from Harrison, Heritage Park, near north, Bryn Mawr, the North Side Residents Redevelopment Council, and there was, in particular, a community working group that was put together to work through this plan, as well as its predecessor plan from Hennepin County. So CPED worked closely, or the city worked closely with Hennepin County on a pre-planning effort. We felt strongly that there was a need to add additional work to that plan so that there would be a plan ready for the entitlements process. So we're doing this specifically for our colleagues in Development Services and specifically for the Commission, so that you have detailed, clear guidance on the city's vision for this particular area. So I want to point out that the city did not do this alone. We did this in close cooperation with our colleagues at Hennepin Community Works, particularly the Botno Community Works Project Office, and also with our colleagues at Metro Transit and MINDOT. As you know, Highway 55 is MINDOT right-of-way. The Botno line is being built by Metro Transit. And so it's a very, it's an area that has a very complicated pattern of ownership and will have a complicated pattern of use between the city, the county, MINDOT, and Metro Transit. So there is a lot of work that went into the, I would say, pre-work of this plan to figure out how the reconfiguration of Botno, of the Botno Corridor would work, of how Highway 55 would work. And that's described in the plan. Jim will tell you more about it. That really sets the stage for those development opportunities. And one of the chief things we're trying to do is get higher density, so that we can actually have a mixed income neighborhood that will help drive the need and the rationale for retail services in an area of the city that is food desert and really doesn't have any neighborhood retail services. I'll let Jim tell you the details, but I, I want to point out the CPED team as well on the project. Jim is the project manager, and he's been working tirelessly for several years, pulling together all the different components of the project. Bretana Thingswili Chan and Adrian Bachheim have done all of the maps and figures in the plan. They're both on the long-range planning team. Peter Crandall used to be on long-range planning, and he did a significant amount of work on renderings for this plan a year or more ago. We've also had participation from Talia Mormon of Long Range Planning, Aaron Hanauer of Land Use Preservation and Design, of our housing director, Andrea Brennan, our business development manager, Miles Mercer, business development project coordinator, Beth Grossen, and then our colleagues from the Transportation Planning Division of Public Works, Kathleen Mail, Becca Hughes, and Don Flum. So I want you to know that what Jim's about to present is something that really comes from not only a lot of parts of the city, but it's also the work of a lot of meetings, conversations with various government agencies, and importantly, with the community and neighborhood groups.
Thank you. I'm Jim Bull, principal city planner. A little bit of background, this is the regional transit system, and pink is the Van White Station. This is the Blue Line Extension, so, you know, it's one of the, what's that? Well, at any rate, it, the point is, is throughout the whole plan, is that this is connecting to a regional system. The Blue Line Extension goes from downtown Target Field out to the northwestern suburbs. The Van White Station is the first station after Target Field. There are three other Minneapolis stations, Penn Avenue, Plymouth Avenue, and Golden Valley Road, although the Plymouth and Golden Valley ones are technically just outside of Minneapolis, but we consider Minneapolis stations. Jack alluded to some of this in his comments, but the stationary boundary, that's on page 13 of your document as well. Typically, it'll be a half-mile circle around the stationary, but we bumped out the northern end to include the Plymouth industrial area and bumped out the southern end to do some land use work based on feedback we were receiving at the time we started the planning for the Bassett Creek Valley. And then we did not go across the interstate into the, into the farmer's market area and all of that, because that's covered by the North Loop Plan. The same stationary, just as an aerial view, and just some important landmarks to point out. On the southerly end of the stationary is the city's impound lot. As we go north, these big green chunks you see here are, what we talk about in the plan a lot, is the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority parcels. And then Heritage Park, which was redeveloped late 90s, early 2000s, and the Plymouth industrial area. So the first, you know, I'm going to go through each one of the chapters. If you need more detail, let me know. If you need less detail, you're, you're out of luck. But, sorry, chapter one is the introductory chapter, and it provides an overview and the purpose of stationary planning. And it also provides demographic and community context information, and it talks a lot about what Jack had alluded to, is our process with the county leading up to this document, which was a lot of the civic engagement and a lot of supporting work. So, for example, all of those documents, the health impact assessment, the bike plan, the market study, the community engagement memos are all linked from this plan to the Hennepin County Community Works webpage and are all, you know, included in this plan through that, that reference. But as Jack mentioned, we wanted to address some further issues, and so we've come up with this revised plan. The introductory chapter goes over a lot of information about demographics and so forth, you know, the number of low-income households, zero car household, car households, and talks about how these transit investments, the actually building of the LRT line and the planning that goes around it, can help to reverse those disparities. The other chapters then build on that to talk about how, how that strategy can address those issues. So chapter two is the transit-oriented development chapter, and this chapter explains the conditions. You know, I should back up to, the content of the plan will, will stay the same, but we will be for the version going to zoning and planning, reorganizing the chapters a little bit, so I want to give people full disclosure about that. That, that the transportation chapter will be the second chapter, the land use will be the third, TOD will be the fourth, and then the other chapters remain exactly the same. Change is the content, in no way, it's just the order of the chapters. But that didn't get done in time for the PDF to be published on the, on the webpage. But right now, sticking with the chapter orders that is in the document that you have, the tran, chapter two is transit-oriented development. And a good map for this, this is updated from the 45-day comment, but one of the things we heard a lot, and I'm sure there'll be people here to talk about it, was concern over displacement and the loss of affordable housing. And so this, that, this chapter provides our strategy for that and talks about the existing affordable housing that's in the stationary. So that's the, that's currently affordable housing that we have in the stationary, the yellow. The hatched lines are Minneapolis Public Housing Authority vacant land, and they have a letter, this wasn't in the 45-day comment, but they submitted a letter during the 45-day review period, and it's attached to your report, saying that proposals for their property, they would be seeking proposals that have commitments for affordable housing at 30% or below of the area median. So these additional hatched, this one should be solid yellow, but these additional hatched parcels, based on the MPHA's statement, would also have an opportunity for affordable housing. Then a third thing that we talk about in this chapter is that developments that seek city money or transit-oriented development money from the county or Metropolitan Council will also have affordability components. And we have a couple examples of that. It's not shown on the map, but the Olson Town Homes site, and I can talk about this in more detail if you want to, would have an affordability component. The Leaf Brothers site, which is being redeveloped, and you saw back in March, I believe, is, just had an affordable housing trust fund award. And, you know, for that plan, when, when that project came through, it relied a lot on this draft work to get those awards and to, for you to do those approvals. So the plan already was supporting incorporating affordable housing into new developments that have public participation. Another important thing to note about the stationary, as Jack alluded to, is the amount of publicly-owned vacant parcels. So the yellow, we've already talked about, are the MPHA. The blue are the city of Minneapolis, some Public Works, some CPED. But when we would sell those and do RFPs, we would also have a commitment to trying to meet the goals of this plan. Another thing the TOD chapter talks about is why, why are we talking about higher density? And this is an example of, you know, probably the biggest buildings you would ever get at the Van White Station area at the southeast and southwest corners of Olson Memorial Highway and Van White. The reason for that is not just because we like tall buildings, but because having that retail base allows us, or having that density allows us to have, near the station allows us to have the ability to meet mixed use, to provide retail sales and services on the first floor, and to have mixed income, which supports retail. So you have people coming by train, by car, and in the, the buildings to support those retail services that the larger neighborhood said they wanted as a part of their stationary. The chapter also has some information on real estate development and some block-by-block guidance on various programs that can be utilized to, to implement that. The next chapter is chapter three, that's transportation, and that describes the various transportation modes, including transit, pedestrian, bicycles, cars, and the associated infrastructure, and just talks about how all those systems can be coordinated to get people to the station so that they can utilize this transit system. And I won't go through that in too much detail, but this is an example of a map that you would see in the plan. And so, for example, it's showing how the street grid could be put together. I want to put a big asterisk next to it, that this, that, that's not saying that this is the way streets would be built. It still would have to go through the whole capital improvement processes and public works would have to look at it. But it just shows, based on some of the work that we've done, that should a site like the Gerard Terrace Site and the Olson Town Homes redevelop, we could put streets back in with development there. Should we get a park along Bassett Creek, we could put a parkway along there. Or if we get open space there, the developers could build streets. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a park board park. But it's, the idea is to show how we could stitch the grid back together. And I think Commissioner Kronzer, this addresses some of your concerns, maybe not totally, about some of the larger superblocks that are on the, in the area. The chapter four is the land use chapter. And this map's a little bit different than the, than in the 45-day comment period map and what went to the Planning Commission call earlier in the year. But basically, when we did the land use plan for the stationary, the area north of 55 in general reflects the, the existing zoning and policy that we have for the, the stationary. However, south of Olson Memorial Highway, you can see that a lot of it has been transitioned to, to, to mixed use. The hatched red shows that if mixed use was built there, there would be retail required on the first floor. And then down in Bassett Creek Valley is, this is, the blue is the impound lot, but the remainder of the areas show that that could be something called mixed-use, medium-to-high-density city residential flex space. And I can talk a little bit more about that, but in general, that would allow production and processing uses, but they're intended to be nothing more than you would find in light industrial, not I2 or I3. And ideally, in the future, we'd have a district that reflected this better. But it's more of the production and processing that's allowed in the commercial districts, not big truck-intensive uses. Next map is the development intensity map. Next map is the development intensity map. And so this talks about, you know, neighborhood scale, which are more of the single-family and two-family areas. Urban scale, which would be buildings that could be up to four to five stories in height. And then the very dark blue is transit scale, which allows buildings taller than five stories in height. And and we heard some comments at that, at the COW meeting about not wanting to have actual stories in there, but staff felt it was important to have some sort of range to give people in the community an idea of what we were looking for and to be clear about the range of the density that would be allowed. So I understand that that, that was a comment that was not changed based on some feedback we received at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. We have, as you'll notice when you read through quite a bit of the neighborhood comments and neighborhood group comments, there's a concern over that level of intensity and height for buildings, and I'm sure people will be here to talk to you about that. We did not address those, we did not make changes to those based, I wanted to say we didn't address it, but we did not make changes to that policy guidance across the board and make it a four-story height across the station, because we do believe that the ability to do some taller buildings supports a lot of the goals to allow a mixed use and mixed income community. And felt that it was important to allow that flexibility to be there. In addition, there are a lot of pollution and soil stability issues and utilities and other things that make developing in the area really difficult. So the idea is, is that there might be opportunities where taller buildings could allow higher density, but would not necessarily be giant, tall buildings taking a whole city block. However, we did review it based on, there was comments from the neighborhood groups and others, we did review it, and there were some areas where we did drop down the intensity on Glenwood. And then, well, these two spots on Glenwood really, because these are some buildings that have a historic character, not historically designated, and this is getting closer to the residential area. But the, still, the bigger parcels at the station area maintain that level of intensity. The next chapter is urban design, and some of the items that are in the urban design chapter is this idea of a street theme network. So not only do we talk about how you can put the grid back together, but the urban design chapter says maybe some of these streets are for bikes and pets only, or where they're along an open space, they have more of a parkway feel, even if they aren't a park board street. One of the issues that certainly came up a lot during all of the community engagement and was reiterated again during the forty-five day review period was Olson Memorial Highway is a barrier, and it's not a great place to be. One of the things that we had worked on was reducing the lane widths of Olson Memorial Highway, but a decision was made by the public agencies, not by CPED staff, that Olson Memorial Highway would remain a six-lane road. So we tried to find ways to address in the urban design chapter development changes that could improve that condition. And I should say during the project with the project office, we did get the speed limit, and MINDAT, we got the speed limit lowered, we got some geometric design changes done to the road, we've got lane widths reduced. And we also had additional pedestrian crossings, tree boulevards placed between the road and the sidewalk, all to, all, that's all already done by the project office when the road is rebuilt. But and I'm not sure how much detail should go into this, but when you get through pages eighty-seven and so forth, it shows about how buildings, when the sites are redeveloped, could be brought up to the street. We could have plazas and landscaping, and then as you, you know, the longer range, as you start to have this level of intensity and development and activity and retail and so forth along the stationary and along Olson Memorial Highway, maybe it becomes possible to do reduction in lanes for parking. You know, that would be something we'd have to work with MINDAT on, and I can't even promise that MINDAT would do it, but maybe it gets to the point where there can be parking lanes there, and it starts to transition to what we call Olson Memorial Boulevard. But there are a lot of partners that are involved in that decision that are beyond CPED. Just another example of the traffic calming ideas by, and one of the things we've worked hard on, and our colleagues in public works have worked hard with the Botino Project Office, is trying to get landscaping and the turn, the turn shadows. And you can see how that type of a visual cue, taller would be better, but it's not possible with the LRT infrastructure overhead to narrow the feel of the roadways one drives down it. Another thing the urban design chapter talks about is trying to preserve a view corridor through the Public Housing Authority parcels. So this is an example of where you could build taller buildings, maybe on the corners and shorter parts of the building in the center of that to preserve views from a public area and the new development through to downtown. It would not preserve views of downtown from everywhere in the Harrison or Heritage Park neighborhoods, but it's an example of how you could create a public space to do that. And then finally, we have some scenarios in the urban design chapter, or finally for the urban design chapter, we have some scenarios that show how we're trying to set some general principles on how the area could redevelop. It won't redevelop exactly like this, we know that. But, you know, in the future, we try to get the grid connected back together and develop these parcels north of Bassett Creek. Hopefully, you know, in the next ten years. Then as we move off impound lot west and development starts happening here, and we get park dedication fees and developers doing things and infrastructure becomes more possible, you extend a road across the creek, it's probably not going to be two bridges, but it could. And then you start to have development here with a linear park all the way along Bassett Creek. And then going way, way out into the future, should the impound lot ever go away, you know, you could then re-stitch the grid right there to redevelop the impound lot. So that's some of the types of things you see in each one of those chapters. Chapter six, heritage preservation, I'm going to spare you guys, I won't go into detail on that. Same thing with chapter seven, implementation. I will note that we did add another table in the implementation chapter to specifically explain how the health, the elements of the plan relate to elements from the health impact assessment and how they're implementing them. That was something that was in the original version we did with the county, and it got omitted. There was never an intent to admit that, so we wanted to be clear that, that this plan is implementing, or this, this plan strategy is implementing goals of the health impact assessment. And then the next steps will be that, assuming that this is approved tonight and things go well, it would go to the Committee of the Whole, go to the Zoning and Planning Committee of the City Council on November thirtieth and to the full city council on December eighth. Attached to your staff report, and they will be included as an appendix to the plan, are all of the comments that we received from the public and from organizations. I will just, I won't go into these in too much detail, because I see some people from the neighborhood are here, and they can speak to it better than I can, but the, we did receive a letter from the Public Housing Authority saying that while in general they support the land use designation on their property, they would be, you know, seeking proposals that have an affordable, affordability component. We received a letter from the Blue Line Coalition. We received a letter from the Harrison Neighborhood, from NERC, from the Bassett Creek Valley Rock, which is members of Harrison and Brenmar that work on areas around Bassett Creek Valley. That letter is much more narrowly focused towards the land use change around the creek to the flex space. And then from the Health Equity Engagement Cohort, we received a letter from them. That's not the full list of it, but those are some of the big, obviously, neighborhood organizations and bigger players in the, in the area that, that do a lot of community engagement beyond the work that we do as the city. And so those are, I think, are worth noting, although all of the comments you received certainly are important. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Vole. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Rockwell.
Just wanted to come back to the, to the the specific height ranges.
Okay.
Which is page seventy-nine of the actual report. I think on the neighborhood scale development district, I want to know if we can maybe modify the language a little bit to reflect, I think, how you wrote it in the neighborhood scale development district, in the other, in maybe in the urban scale development district. So let me kind of tell you what I'm broadly thinking and then why. So the neighborhood scale development district, say, supports low to medium density development types in the existing residential neighborhood, includes single and two-family homes and accessory dwelling units, and in some areas, townhomes, cluster developments, or small apartment buildings may be appropriate. So what it does is it gives stories, number of stories, but it also gives some flexibility depending on context. And I think what we see a lot on the commission is the fact that, like, we don't have a three-story district, right, in the zoning code. We have, I mean, we end up having these, this guidance in our planning documents, it doesn't really match our zoning code, and then people come and they're like, you know, they're not happy to see that somebody appears to be flaunting the rules when in fact we have policy guidance that says it's okay, but they're asking for a CUP. And so just, I think it creates some confusion. And so I want to respect the guidance, because I think the guidance makes sense. But I think that, I guess I'm asked to form this as a question. The urban scale development district, in contrast to the neighborhood scales, just says, supports medium density development at three to four-story building heights. And I wonder if there's a way to, to sort of give that guidance, but also allow that, for example, on the edge of a park or where a urban scale development district meets a, I'm just, I'm throwing out hypotheticals, that it would want to capture, where an urban scale development district bumps up against a transit scale development district, which might be a fifteen-story building, like that there could be some, we, we understand that there might be a reason to have a softened transition, right? So I don't know if my fellow commissioners share those kinds of concerns. I, again, I, I'm not trying to undermine what the guidance is, I just want to make sure we're phrasing this in such a way that it's clear that these policies, how these policies, like, really would, would function. Because I don't, I'm not sure that it makes sense that we would, I'm not sure that we as a commission would say no to a building that was coming in at five stories next to a fifteen-story building. Like, that doesn't really, and particularly if it were a five-story building that was the same height as the four-story buildings, which we see a lot, because we see zoning for four stories or fifty-six feet, and then we see a five-story building come in at fifty-two feet, and then and then we hear a lot of pushback because they're building a five-story building when they should only be building four, and that doesn't really make sense from an urban forum standpoint. I'm going to stop talking, but do you, I mean, I know this has already been covered a little bit, but do you think there's a way that we can soften that language? And I guess I'm really only looking at that.
Well.
Urban scale development district, because I think the other two districts have good language in them.
So it, just to clarify, you're, you're wanting to modify the language for the urban scale district? Or the?
Right. Because to reflect the style of your guidance in the neighborhood scale development district, for example.
Well, it's in the actual chapter itself, I think it's on page.
Seventy-nine.
Yeah. But I think on page eighty-one, we, it says, these categories above are meant to provide a general description of the development intensity. Further, the development intensity map is designed to provide guidance where building height could be allowed to further objective lands, but objectives of the plan, but does not require that height. So it's not saying that, you know, you have to do that. And it says, development proposals should be evaluated against the policy guidance of the entire plan. Zoning code requirements such as setbacks, impervious surface floor area, site design, you know, and on and on. The zoning code has specific evaluation factors. So I was trying to get it there, and then I think on seventy... I don't know where it is here, but I think it might be in the actual land use part of it, but it talks about, the, the idea is that intensity goes from the station out to the neighborhoods. So if that's what you're trying to get at, we could have a sentence like.
I'm, what I'm trying to get at is.
The way you would recommend it is something that says intensity should move from the transit stationary to down to the neighborhoods. Something like that, if that's what you'd want to do. I think it's in there already, but if we wanted it in the spot, that's probably, it wouldn't hurt to add it there.
I think you're right that it's there already. I just want to make sure that when people are looking at this plan quickly, that it's clear what we're intending, because the how this is interpreted is off, is like ninety percent of our hearings.
So, so my suggestion would be if that is your intent is, that would be something that you'd recommend that we do is add that language to the urban scale.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Crowe.
Jim, are you aware of when the zoning, the rezoning study will begin for this?
Well, so the, one of the issues with this plan is the fact that right now, as you're aware, we're going through a comp plan update. So some of this stuff is, you know, density ranges and urban neighborhood and transit scale and zoning districts and all of that, I'm assuming is going to, to change with the adoption of the plan. But we can't put every, so we, we were in this situation where we're utilizing Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, trying to anticipate Minneapolis twenty, twenty forty, and trying to make it clear in the plan that whatever happens in Minneapolis twenty forty for categories and policy will certainly be the policy the city uses. But we would do a rezoning study, I think, sometime after, look, to be straight and blunt, I don't know when we'll do it for sure, but it would be sometime after Minneapolis twenty forty would be adopted. Now, if it turns out the city council gives us direction to completely redo the zoning ordinance, I'm not so sure whether it makes sense to do a complete rezoning study until we, we, we know what types of zoning districts we're going to have, but there are some areas that, that definitely would need to be addressed, so. I'm not giving you a very good answer, but I don't know. There's a lot of moving pictures. It's not something we're going to sit on forever, we're going to do it as soon as we possibly can, because we know we have to do it, but we also don't want to get ahead of all the policy work that's happening.
The follow-up, when is the anticipated adoption? If you can hazard a guess of the twenty forty plan?
You know, I don't know, Jack, you might have helped me with that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowe, the, the schedule for the comp plan is as follows. We're required to submit the plan to the Metropolitan Council by December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. So knowing that the process through the Planning Commission and the Zoning and Planning Committee of the City Council, the mayor's signature takes about six weeks, we're doubling that, so we expect to begin the formal approval process on the comp plan update in September of twenty eighteen. Metropolitan Council has a required six-month jurisdictional review, which means that for six months before we take it through the approval process, we need to give our plan to St. Paul, Bloomington, Edina, Golden Valley, Fridley, Columbia Heights, so on, all of the, all of those entities, Hennepin County, the Metropolitan Airports Commission, and so on. And we expect that we'll be receiving all of their plans so that we can review them as well. So we are intending to have a draft document in March of twenty eighteen. So we're in the countdown. We, we have twenty weeks left, actually nineteen weeks left, until we have to have that done. We're doing community engagement in the coming three weeks. We'll be doing additional engagement in that six-month period from March to September. And it is already on the work plan for twenty nineteen that we will update zoning citywide according to the way the comp plan is adopted. That's because it's required in state law that our zoning code conforms to our comprehensive plan. So as I maybe mentioned, as I mentioned before, but maybe didn't speak to enough, one of the reasons, I suppose if we had our druthers and, and could stop the world, we would not do this plan now, we would wait and incorporate it all into the comprehensive plan. But the fact of the matter is there's a development market out there, there are public partners who have and need to go forward with planning. In particular, one of the, one of the things that our colleagues in business development need to be able to do is show the policy rationale for why they are seeking cleanup money. So we are expecting that there's a lot of intensive work to do on land assembly, preparation, and cleanup well before anybody is submitting proposals for the Planning Commission to approve entitlements. So, so we have, we have some time to do that rezoning. We have actually started to think that through. It's not like we're going to be starting cold. We've already been thinking that through, but we don't have a definitive for you at this time. I expect that this, along with the rest of the city, will be twenty nineteen. Okay?
Commissioner Magrino?
Thanks. Wanted to say I do generally have some of the same concerns as Commissioner Rockwell, but I think I'll wait. but I think I'll wait till after the public has a chance to testify before getting into some of those. I did have a question for Mr. Vol. One of the comments, I think, was kind of throughout the public comment was mentioning inclusionary zoning. And I, I think I personally probably think that that's something that would be best handled as part of the comp plan, kind of thinking about the whole city. But I was wondering, is there kind of an official city response to inclusionary zoning on the site, other than the comments about NPHA land or?
Well, sure. So there are a lot of recommendations for specific tools like that, like community benefits agreement, inclusionary zoning, and so forth. We felt that it was, since, you know, it was best to set a broad strategy for the station area and then knowing that there is a city work group working on a lot of these issues and the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan working on a lot of these issues, that we did not make specific recommendations saying that we'll do those things in the station area. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't do those, but I don't know if the, you know, we'll, we have a new city council coming in and we'll see whether they will do inclusionary zoning or not.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Commissioner Reeland?
Yes, this is a large area. Are there some general ideas of cars and parking and kind of a, a sense of something different happening as, as a result of this all being planned comprehensively that there's been discussions about?
Yes. But no, in all seriousness, for the issue of parking, we have a city policy of not doing park and rides at the station, so that's listed in the station area plan. We do not prohibit parking from being built as a part of a development. It certainly can be done. You know as well as I do that the various proposals you, you see, there are good ways to do it and bad ways to do it, but in general, if a development meets a lot of the transit incentives that are in the zoning code, they could have a, a lower amount of parking. And I think that's going to be more likely with the residential developments as you get closer to the Bassett Creek Valley Station and we have some commercial developments, they, they may need parking. And where they will need parking, there will still be the maximums in our zoning code, but we also have the issue of high groundwater. And so parking may have to be surface lots, it may not be able to be underground parking, it may have to be structured parking in a building with the buildings above the structured parking, and that's some of the reason why we talk about the flexibility for a little bit taller buildings. And the urban design chapter shows how if structured parking is done, or even surface lots, it should be lined with development. So in general, this plan echoes all of our other plans, all of our other policy in the zoning code, where we're trying to reduce the amount of required parking and parking that's needed, but also, and making, providing all kinds of opportunities to rely on transit rather than parking, but understanding there will be cases where parking is needed and where that happens, it'll have to be designed so that it's not the overall emphasis of the site.
Yeah, as you just pointed out, the, the lack of potential underground parking will push pressures elsewhere. So it sounds that at least we're cognizant of that is one of the things that will be happening, is there, there will be cars here. We can certainly direct policies that help guide for less cars, but we don't want to design something that hasn't had a thoughtful review of where people will park and, and how the roads, roads actually work and how folks can get around and get their groceries and, and do the things that all these new people to this area will want to do. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I will note real quick, nitpicky thing, but page eighty-seven, page eighty-eight, there's just some wayward trees in the graphics. So I, I pick out all the trees. Great, thank you, Jim. At this point, we can open the public hearing and hear from anybody who wants to come up and speak on this item. Can I get a quick show of hands, how many people want to speak? Okay, so a couple. So please come up to the mic, state your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Dave Colling. I'm the Executive Director at the Harrison Neighborhood Association, office at five-oh-three Irving Avenue North, Minneapolis. Reason I, I wanted to address the commission today and, and first of all, thank you for the opportunity for this. And I know there's just been, as you know, there's been a lot of work in the past, over five years of community engagement work done, Mr. Vol and, and, and staff of the committee have been really good about that. And, you know, we're really excited as a neighborhood to see what's coming out of this plan and really excited about what could come in the future. I think if you told the folks in Harrison that there may be an opportunity for a grocery store, they'd all line up and say, where do I sign right now? But, you know, there was just, of all the great things that are in it, there's a few things that, one of the big things that came out of our five years of community engagement that we don't see there, and that's, you know, that, that gap between the time that all the new development happens and affordable housing is built and, which is probably post twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, once the rail is moving, and between that time and today. We're already seeing right now, hopefully at that point, we're already seeing a lot of, the, the home prices increasing, which are going to be increasing rents, and displacement and gentrification is going to be happening now, you know, in this next four to five-year period. And what, what we'd like to see is something to a, a, address that. You know, it's great that we, we have some affordable housing coming in, we need it, but by that time, you know, I don't think the city's going to expect people to leave because they are losing their housing and then come back. Seventy percent of the rent of the residents of Harrison are renters, and most of that is in single-family homes, not apartments. So we're going to see again, with all the, the increased values, increase in rents. And again, we're seeing folks that are already affecting a lot of residents in our neighborhood. We're calling that our displacement, replacement gap, and we're to address that. And maybe that's in the comp plan, but again, we haven't seen that, so I don't know if that's where it's going to be or not. But I just want to, you know, again, you've, you've seen some of our statements, howie fifty-five and, and, and the height of the buildings, and I think Mr. Vol addressed that as well, but you've seen our comments on that. But our big thing is again, that timing. We just don't know what to tell our residents right now for the next four to five years. How, you know, this doesn't help them in that sense right now, and maybe we have a comp plan in two or three years that does, but again, at that point, we're going to have people already losing their homes. And maybe it's inclusionary zoning, maybe it's redefining affordability in the sense that, you know, thirty percent AMI still is unaffordable to many residents in Harrison right now, let alone what it's going to be in a couple of years. Write a first refusal for buildings that are sold, redevelopment, and just cause for eviction as well. But I know, you know, Minneapolis has a long history of being proactive. We don't want to see what happened in Denver. We're seeing huge homeless populations increase because they weren't proactive enough and a lot of people lost their houses because of the increases in the rents and, and redevelopment that happened there. And we're really looking forward to working with you and the planning department. Really excited as a neighborhood to see what comes next. But there's this, this little gap that we're trying to fix, and it's not addressed here, not even a hundred percent sure this is the place to address it. But I want to make sure that we're out here and we're talking about it as much as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to ask the speaker a question? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker can come up and state your name and your address.
My name is Richard Panzeroni. I live at nineteen oh-three Fourth Avenue North. I've lived in Harrison and I'm also a board member since nineteen eighty. I've seen the neighborhood go through a lot of changes. I'm very interested in the projects that are going on now. I think they can only benefit the neighborhood. But what I noticed is a lot of the families that live in Harrison are really struggling. You've got mom maybe trying to raise six to eight kids all on her own, and it's just an incredible task for her. And I've noticed that when buildings have been sold, the landlords have changed hands or the building has been condemned and these families have to move. It's a devastating effect on the children. They've got to adjust to a new school, a new neighborhood. And a lot of these families, my kids growing up got to know these families and told me how the kids after that got involved in drugs or crime. I really think a lot of planning needs to be given to the families that would be displaced by all these projects and some serious thought given to affordable housing for them so they don't have to be displaced, they can stay living in Harrison. That's a big concern that I've had over the years because I've seen a great many struggling families in Harrison. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions for this speaker? Not seeing any. Is there anybody else that would like to talk on this topic? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Madeline Shaw. I live at four nineteen Newton Avenue North. And I echo everything that our Neighborhood Association Director has said, and, you know, I don't know as much about the zoning and planning issues as all of you do, and I understand that some of the money from affordable housing comes from the developers, so it's a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario. But I think it's very true that there is going to be this gap, and we're already seeing gentrification in our neighborhood. And I know that that can be handled in a lot of different ways and that it might be handled in the comprehensive plan, but what I'd say is like you can't do too little to try to work against gentrification, like that's been happening all over our city, it's been happening all over our country. And I think that like in how thoughtful the city has been about these plans and doing all of these like public engagement pieces, like I really appreciate that, and I don't want to see it go to waste. Like I think we're making a lot of good steps to do that. And so if we were to just kind of, like I think we're missing an opportunity if we don't have some really firm things in the station plan, like yeah, it might end up being redundant with the comprehensive plan, so what? It's better to be safe than to later be like, oh, we didn't put enough things in there to protect our residents and our neighborhood from displacement with this project. So again, the piece about, I don't know exactly how the, is it mandatory inclusionary zoning works as far as like making sure that there's like affordable housing that's guaranteed long-term, and also the way that you define that. And I know that that's been problematic in a lot of affordable housing of like, how do we define what's affordable? So I would really encourage, like I appreciate how much the city has engaged, and I think it needs to be more concrete and stronger. And I think that if we're not doing that, we're being complicit in the displacement of our residents because gentrification and the like pressures of development of forcing our residents out of our neighborhoods is the strongest pressure. And so if we don't do really concrete steps against that, then we're being complicit in saying, well, it's okay if our residents get displaced with this development. So I think that there's a lot of pieces, again, that our Neighborhood Association Director spoke to. I think one of the other pieces was paying moving expenses for residents who are displaced as like kind of a, maybe a remedial thing, or having the option for residents to have first right of refusal when a property, when the property that they live in is sold. But I think the most important things are having some sort of like concrete language in the zoning and in the inclusionary zoning about affordable housing and how we define that, and that thirty percent AMI is too high for the residents in our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Alexis Penny, twenty-four thirty Logan Avenue North. So technically I live in the Jordan area, which is just north of Harrison. I work in Harrison neighborhood. I've been working in Harrison neighborhood for the last two or three years. Very beautiful neighborhood. I can't say that I've lived, been there as long as maybe some of the colleagues that have just spoke and seen a number of changes. However, I did have an opportunity last year to door knock the entirety of Harrison neighborhood, mainly for the nonprofit that's owned by Redeemer Lutheran Church, specifically to engage with neighborhoods, residents to figure out if they knew about their services and the support systems that we had through the nonprofit, through the church, and even through our, our nonprofit business, which is called Venture North Bike Walk and Coffee Shop. And surprisingly, while walking through the neighborhood and talking to many residents and getting to know them, their family members, and things about them through their past and kind of where they want to go in the future, some of the goals, people are very interested in seeing positive changes in their neighborhood. There's no doubt about that, very little doubt about that. I think what they're very cautious about is will those changes be there to benefit them? Will they be able to stay in place to reap the benefits of any of the development that will take place, or even the public work amenities that will take place with the light rail transit station and the light rail transit itself? Specifically, I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that a recent study was brought to my attention by the Metropolitan Council that said that essentially nine suburbs, as well as the city of Minneapolis and the city of St. Paul, are seeing increased people enduring poverty essentially, and as well as the people that are in those nine surrounding suburbs. Those are folks that at one time did live in the city of St. Paul or Minneapolis and now live in these surrounding suburbs because of property values increasing, for example, and maybe situations with, with not be able to have a landlord that's renting and it's more of a slumlord than they are actually looking out for their, their best interest. Most recently, currently at the city in my neighborhood, there's a huge loss, revoke, they're revoking the license of this student named Mahmoud Khan that owns a lot of properties in North Minneapolis. With the revocation of those properties, a lot of these people are renters, low-income folks. And unfortunately, it was not necessarily the city's fault, but the communication that needed to take place with those residents and whether or not the license would be revoked from that landlord was not maybe as quick. And so if that license is revoked, which it probably should be, let's be honest, like slumlords should not be allowed to operate. That's not, I think that's not in the best interest of the city or the residents. But if that does happen, a lot of people in those properties that he owns, which are, I, I believe somewhere up in the seventies, in the double digits, very large number of properties, they're going to find themselves homeless and in a very tight situation. And so with, given the nuances of what's happening at the city, what's been said here about community benefits, inclusionary zoning, and whether that should be done in comprehensive twenty forty plan or done in this project to make sure that we're being preventative of any displacement, I think that's all spot on, it's completely spot on. A lot of times we use this thing called an equitable development scorecard in, in order to do our, our projects and our development projects. I don't know if we're honestly living up to those standards currently right now in terms of where we want to go, the city that we want to be, and the metropolitan region that we could be in comparison. But I will say this, though, I think that if anybody wants to work on making sure that we don't have the largest disparities in the nation and that we're second behind Mississippi, I'm willing to work with you on that, but I think it starts right here today with the decisions we make at the table. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions for this speaker? Seeing none, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? Anybody else? All right, not seeing any, we can close the public hearing. I think before we get into discussion or make a motion, I'm wondering if staff could come up and maybe sort of provide a response to some of the questions that I've asked specifically about this, this idea of this displacement gap, or any, any thoughts about how that might be further discussed as part of ongoing or future efforts around this, this project?
Well, so it's, it's obviously something that we know is an issue and we know is important and don't take lightly and, but when we think of the scope of a small area plan to, to get through all of the work it would have taken to do all of those tools at, at this point, I think it, it's more appropriately addressed through that city council working group and the comprehensive plan. What we tried to do is best we could in this plan, because I mean, it's been going on since almost two thousand and twelve, is to try and move it forward. And I think if we were, if we hadn't moved forward, that there are some real projects like the redevelopment of the Olson Memorial, of the Olson Townhomes where that's, this area right here, they've, they've got an Affordable Housing Trust Fund award from the city council, and they're looking at building a new, building new buildings, letting the existing residents move into those new buildings, so they don't have to move somewhere else and come back. And then taking down the old buildings and develop, and opening up more land in conjunction with the public housing authorities land for, for projects that could have an affordability component. But without some of this even draft land use guidance, those things can't happen. We start getting pushback saying, well, your plans don't support that. And so we felt it was really important, for even the, the Leaf Brothers Arts Base, to, to get that to move forward, we, we had to show that we had future land use guidance. So there are real things happening now that really have affordability components and have components for people in the neighborhood that we felt it was important to, to move forward, to provide guidance for the publicly owned land that we have. But I will say that the, the more detailed strategies, especially for the, the residential, well, it's all residential, but the, the lower density residential, the houses, people's homes being bought, or landlords selling their houses and so forth, I think the, the best strategy for us as a city is to address that through, through the processes that the city has going right now. There's a lot more experts working on it, and I think that that's the best way to go. I think for us to try and tackle it on this plan would take, take quite a bit of effort.
Yes, Commissioner Reeland, go ahead.
Yes, and I disagree that it's perhaps other city processes, but is there a way where we could be more? we could be more overtly staying that for this large area plan, that there is an ethic that we're trying to encourage development that encourages people staying in place? I mean, so even if we don't have the, the details, at least we can reinforce the city's work, staff, other CPED staff work on affordability by saying that, that that is an ethic that we support.
Well, I guess people will have to judge for themselves. I felt that was what we were trying to do, was give that broad direction, so that when CPED does RFPs and when the Public Housing Authority does developments and when public, you know, it's harder to influence a private land transaction. Person X sells this house and does whatever with it. But on the publicly owned land, we've tried to set out a policy that this is the stuff that CPED and the Public Housing Authority in Hennepin County and Metropolitan Council and everybody, when they're deciding where to put their resources, this is what they, they should be doing, is that make it so that we have mixed use, mixed income, provide opportunity for new residents to live here, but preserve the ability for existing residents to stay here. And I, the example I tried to give with Olson Town Homes, I think, is a good example of where we told the Minnesota Housing Finance Authority that this is a great project, because not only is it preserving the affordability, but it's preserving the ability of the people that live there to, to stay there. And that was one of the reasons it's, it got some of its awards from the city, from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So I feel like the broad strategy is in there, and it's something that we're doing.
And, and again, I, I don't disagree with you. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a sentence or two about staying in place or, or something where, you know, in response to what folks are telling us, that we, we can be responsive to those concerns and maybe add, stay in place as the words that could be included, if they're not already there.
Sure. I, I think, I don't know exactly where it is, but I believe that we have exactly those, those words in there. But I'd have to look in here to find it.
Okay. So while Jim, while Jim's looking for that, maybe I can say a couple of words myself. One of the frankly fantastic opportunities we have at this particular station area, as we've mentioned, is that there are large super blocks of publicly owned land. And that this plan calls for redeveloping those tracks first, which means nobody has to lose their existing house, at least through redevelopment efforts that the city is channeling or that the Public Housing Authority is channeling. We already, we have a preponderance of affordable housing, both subsidized and naturally occurring affordable housing in this neighborhood. We have worked very closely with the city's housing director to get the specific language to ensure that, that we are being as sensitive as we can. I'm not going to lie to you, the city of Minneapolis, as much as we would like to be the first city in the country to figure out how to solve the gentrification problem, we're not there yet, which doesn't mean we're not trying. But one of the, one of the inherent things that I think is, is important to keep in mind is that you cannot necessarily, if we can achieve that at all, we certainly cannot achieve it in an area that is a mile wide by a mile high. Because anything that happens in this area, if we aim to solve it in one place, it will displace the problem to another area. That's exactly why we're trying to do it in the Comprehensive Plan. I, I hear you that it's not quick enough, but it does take a great deal of back research, and it takes, it takes some rethinking what we're actually doing. And one of our concerns is, is the balancing act between how loosely and how tightly we try to control the development market. One of the things we know is when we try to control it very tightly, through things like specific height standards, the development market may go somewhere else, and a particular part of the city might miss that opportunity. When we control it too loosely, it may have negative impacts. So we're trying to find that correct balance. But we, we do know that we hear over and over again, in this part of the city and in other parts of the city of Minneapolis, particularly the north side, that the neighborhoods are desperate for investment and have great concern that there has been investment in many other parts of the city, particularly on the south side and on the east side, but not on the north side. So this is a billion-dollar investment by the federal government, the state government, and metropolitan government, and the county government to build this light rail line. That's investment that's not going to, we can't accept that investment and expect everything to stay in place. We can do what we can to control things so that it is amenable, but we also know that if we keep out investment, there's never going to be the retail services that this neighborhood needs. There's never going to be, you asked about parking cars. Most of the neighborhood doesn't own a car. And so what we're thinking of is, instead of encouraging more places for people to park, there will be light rail trains that are arriving at eight-minute headways throughout most of the day. There will be a bus rapid transit line that will have, be arriving on 12- to 15-minute headways most of the day. So that will supplement the lack of, of automobile ownership that's presently there. Thank you.
So maybe you have that. Well, yeah, so I, you know, again, you'll have to determine whether you think this is what, what you're looking for. But on page 12 in the introduction, we say one of the main goals of the plan, there's a list of goals, this was developed with the community, but the fourth bullet point down on page 12 says, preserve the ability of existing residents to stay in the neighborhood while creating opportunities for new residents to live in the area. And then the recommendations for Chapter Two, the Transit-Oriented Development, has, has a series of recommendations for the transit station area. And it says, existing affordable housing units for current residents should be preserved. And then next bullet point, new affordable housing is encouraged to replace existing affordable housing losses due to redevelopment, rising rents, or as a part of mixed income developments. And then finally, the final point, and this applies a lot to the work that the city's doing to tie it all together, that says, request for proposals and development of public land should ensure balanced development that includes neighborhood serving and retail, income diversity, employment targets, you know, some of these things are going to be different depending whether it's a commercial development or a residential development, provides housing choices, and preserves affordable housing options.
And I, I just, the, one, one of the pieces of the argument is also that staying in place means that there's economic growth. If your family changes, you know, you're not forced to move out of a neighborhood because you're more financially better off than you were 10 years ago. So again, it's a complex issue with, you know, the sense of neighborhood really important. And I, I just want to know that the folks that have come here today have been heard, and it sounds like our intentions are very similar.
I'd, I'd agree with that. I think, you know, we've heard what they said, and it's our intention to try and address it, but there are a lot of moving parts. I think Jack explained it well.
Thank you, Mr. Vol. Any further questions for staff? Thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion or start a conversation, discussion on this topic? Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I kind of mentioned this earlier. I would like to echo some of the things that Commissioner Markwell said earlier about including specific building heights in small area plan or recommended specific building heights. There's a couple different places where it describes the kind of land use categories, or the transit scale, the urban scale, and the more neighborhood-oriented one. And I guess I can turn this up at all three of those and just, I, we've been seeing a lot of this in the past few years, and I'm sure before that, where we do a lot of outreach and have open houses and get feedback. And so we put stuff in a small area plan that then we see projects for in those areas, and people spend a lot of time and put a lot of effort into saying, four stories on this street. And then we end up approving conditional use permits for things because they, you know, met the requirements of the conditional use permit. And so I, I think it might be time for us to stop putting this kind of language in our small area plans. So I don't know the best, I don't, you know, I don't know if I have the support of the majority of the commission here, or, and I don't know exactly the best way to handle that. I don't think we should try to write it specifically now, but maybe we could give some kind of direction as this gets considered by zoning and planning in the next few weeks. That's something that I would definitely support.
I, I have a, I have a suggestion for writing now, just, and that we can, I want to just open this up for discussion. So this, so I'm only addressing the urban scale development district on page 79, and then I'll bounce back to page 68, which addresses the same district but in a different context. So, the, I don't think I'm changing the intent of this section at all. So, but I'd like to hear from staff. So, the proposal is to, to adjust the language to urban scale development district, supports medium-density development, period, includes three-to-four-story building heights, period. The urban scale development district is intended to provide transitional density between the transit-scale development district and the neighborhood-scale development district, period. So what I've done there is I've taken the language that you've used in the neighborhood-scale development district. So a neighborhood-scale development district, you've said, it includes single and two-family homes and accessory dwelling units, along with some other elements, but it's not absolute and it's not, it doesn't preclude other appropriate uses. And then I've just contextualized that density level between the other two per... Do any commissioners have any thoughts, or staff? I'm trying to, I'm trying to get what we're kind of talking about to, to be able to thread through the, the processes that we know we work through and to, I have the language here if you want it, if you can read by handwriting.
Commissioner Brown, sir.
Thank you, President, Vice President Suck. I also find it difficult when stories limits are in a small area plan. We've seen that countless times here, the last few years, that the small area plan is used to control height when in fact the zoning code is used to control the height, and there's a special use process to increase the height of buildings. We've also heard a lot tonight about inclusionary zoning, mixed-income buildings. It's much easier to add a story to a four-story building to get affordable units than is to build a whole new project. So I would advocate for flexibility in heights. I don't think three and four is enough flexibility for a pretty big section of this plan. I've advocated for the term mid-rise buildings, which is a little ambiguous, but it's, it doesn't say it's a four-story building. It means it's a mid-rise building. That could be three stories, it could be five stories, it might even be six stories. But there's a range and a character to that type of building that's not 10 or 15 or 20 stories, but it's certainly not three stories or two stories. So I would advocate for flexibility, and not sure what the answer is exactly.
Sorry, Commissioner Brown, are you advocating for just eliminating any mention of numbers? What I was trying to do, whether it's clear, I think it's clear, but what I was trying to do is provide that sort of broad guidance, but give the clear intent of the policy that that is guidance and is not...
We've all seen this.
I know.
Marcy Holmes, two weeks ago, the small area plan says four stories. Zoning code allows for flexibility in height if they meet certain conditions.
Right.
I'm in favor of a more of a character-defining term like bid-rise versus a number.
I'd love to hear staff opinion about how to describe this in a way that works.
And Commissioner Magrino had a comment, too.
I'm sorry, is that a question for staff or?
Commissioner Reillyn was a question for staff.
You know, I honestly don't know how to come up with a solution that'll make all of you happy. I'm sorry, but I'll tell you what I tried to do, is I tried to put stories in there, not to say, and I did development review for 10 years, so I get that, not to say this has to be four stories and it can never be anything taller than that. But I think if we get rid of density and we get rid of stories, and we say things like, you know, it's not fair to the people in the neighborhood, they don't know what, what we're saying can go there. So I think there has, my personal opinion, and respectfully, you can disagree on this, is that there has to be some sort of range. But understanding that, having done this work, that every time I took a project forward that had an increase in height, everybody said to me, oh, your plan says four stories. I hate that stuff happening. So I tried to put, I tried to address it by putting language in here that, that said the categories are meant to provide a general, and I think a person could cut and paste this into their staff report, that's the way I was thinking of it. The categories are meant to provide a general description of development intensity. But, you know, there's, it talks about how you have to evaluate height against the policy guidance of the entire plan. So in other words, a taller building, maybe that allows residents to stay in the neighborhood or that puts a parking ramp on the second and third floor because it can't be built underground rather than a giant surface parking lot, or that does a point tower, certainly gives you more ability to say, that's the kind of building we want, rather than a big building that covers the whole block that's six stories tall and that just technically meets the zoning code. I also said the zoning code has specific evaluation factors for increasing the maximum height beyond the allowed height that are applicable, is applicable as well. I tried to talk about some of the things that people should be looking at when looking at a height increase is, you know, floor area ratio, site design standards, surrounding character, transition to just adjacent uses. So I think there's a lot of different ways you could tackle it, but I felt by giving it a specific general area to shoot for, so people, a layperson reading it gets an idea of what it's supposed to be, and having language in here that talks about the types of factors that we all consider to increase the height was the most appropriate way to do it. But I'm not so vain as to say that that's the only way it could be done.
So, I want you to know, too, that this is not something that we just came up with and said, voila, it's done. There's pieces of this plan that are on the cutting room floor because we looked at different ideas and we discarded them. One of the concerns we have, given the current development market, I think you'll all recognize this, is that because of the building code, we're getting six-story buildings, sometimes seven, and there are two, and when we have terms that are, we want to be flexible, but when we have terms that are too loose, the building or the development community will build to the building code because it's easy for them to get in, make some money, and keep moving on to the next site. And so we have a lot of parts of the city that actually could have a great deal more development intensity than they do, but because the language allows it, they are coming in for six stories, places in downtown. We, we, we do not, we would like to see variation in this project area. We do not want to see a mass of six- or seven-story buildings that are all 200 feet long. And we are concerned that if that happens, there may not actually be enough of a market to drive that critical retail and neighborhood services that the neighborhood really desperately needs. We, we came to you a couple of weeks ago with information about commercial and retail services in the city and showed you how people are leaving the city left and right to go get what they need because we're not allowing the kind of development that drives neighborhood and retail services. So one of the concerns we have is that if we are writing our plans to the zoning code instead of adapting the zoning code to the plans, then we are feeding into a development market that, let's face it, when the client is seeking a certain kind of rent, they will build a very nice six-story building. And when they don't think the market is there for a certain kind of rent, they will build an okay six-story building. And we're concerned that this entire opportunity would be lost if we had language that eventually allowed just six-story buildings. So that's our concern. And, and because of that, if we allow everything to be, what we're trying to do is show where the building should be tallest, and if we allow some caps on the lower buildings, we're hoping that that might actually circumvent some of the displacement. We can't, we can't actually control the private development market through design. But we're concerned that if we do allow too much of the six-and-seven-story design, that's going to encourage developers to cannibalize single-family homes. And, and as you'll see from the land use plans, we have not indicated on most of those single-family neighborhoods that they would be changed. And that's because we respect what we hear from the neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioner Magrino?
Thanks. And I think, going back a couple of comments there, how Mr. Vol started off, what you were saying about having worked in development review for 10 years, I think that sometimes kind of is the issue. of is the issue is because you have worked in development review for 10 years and we all are kind of generally aware of how a conditional use permit works. But it often doesn't get explained very well. And so you get a 500-word news story about how people are seeking special permission to do this and that. And we end up with kind of the same battle every three months where people think that the city is doing X and Y to them and developers are doing X and Y. And it just, we end up with kind of an unhealthy situation where everything is like a, you know, I don't want to use a term like fight, but you know, it is very contentious all the time. And to have to do that every time there's like a 60-unit building that comes up for us to take a look at, I don't know that that's a great, it hasn't been working super well. And I think we should just really be thinking about ways to make that work a little bit better because Mr. Byers or Dr. Byers is right that, you know, the building code does kind of drive that six-story building type. But I don't know that that necessarily is bad. I mean, if that's what developers are building, that's providing housing for people, as long as it meets the other conditions that we've set out. And I think we did a good job in, this is a very good plan, you know, laying out that we want retail in certain places and we want certain design considerations. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily bad if we get a lot of six-story buildings. I think ideally we'd want it to be bigger at the intersections, but you know, I don't want to overthink it too much, I guess.
Commissioner Cronzer.
Just wanted to be clear on that, advocating for six-story buildings that are 200 feet long within the zoning classification. We are seeing that. But there's lots of ways, hopefully the new comp plan can address building length and size and a little more strong on character of place. I am advocating for is flexibility. So here's my last idea and I'm going to leave at that. Maybe within the urban scale paragraph on page 79, there's a simple sentence that says, after, in three or four-story building heights, or heights as approved through specific development projects. You know, the zoning code allows for additional height through that process. So maybe you can just simply state that in that paragraph. But I do believe, Jim, that you do have very good language in there and that idea of copy and paste in this staff report is quite brilliant. So thank you for that. But just a little bit of clarity of that, that there's no limit to four stories in this district.
And I know it's not my place to jump in here, but I'm going to, just for the sake of clarity, I didn't mean to say that you couldn't, you know, I just said, of course, the way I did it is best. But I do need, if, I do need at some point for you all to, as a commission, to make motions. You know, I can't go based on what one commissioner says. So, you know, if that's what you're going towards doing, that's great, but I just, it would need to be some sort of a motion that explains what the commission would like us to forward to the city council.
Any further questions or comments? Somebody want to make that motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Why don't I make a, why don't I think it's a hybrid motion? Which is simply adding, so a move that we add, there'll be two motions that are paired. So on page 79 to the urban scale development district, in between the first sentence and the last sentence, so after the word heights, period, we insert a sentence that says the urban scale development district is intended to provide transitional density between the transit scale development district and the neighborhood scale development district, period. And then it goes on to your last sentence, which is this category is generally most appropriate, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that kind of achieves the, you know, this is guidance, but this is what the guidance is. And so then I would like to go to page 68. Well, I'm going to pair the motions. I think they're appropriate to be paired. So on page 68, there is the medium density residential, as defined by dwelling units per acre. And I would insert in between the first sentence and the second sentence there, the medium density residential district is intended to provide transitional density between the medium to high-density residential district and the low density residential district. And then on to the last sentence, this land use category, et cetera, et cetera. So there are two motions, but achieving the same thing on two parallel, or maybe it's one motion.
So assuming that the motion is to approve the stationary plan with the recommended text changes on page 68 and 79.
Correct.
As stated. Is there a second? Any further discussion?
There is. I'll say one thing, just I wanted to add into the affordable housing discussion earlier, since we had some comments on that. Yeah, I think Jack made very good comments there and I totally agree. I think that this, specifically, I think that the, anything we do in this neighborhood is going to have real ramifications throughout the city. And we need to be addressing these issues on a citywide basis. And I know there are a lot of policy ideas that are in the comments in this, in our packets, and being discussed by incoming city council members, incoming mayor, that are, you know, I hope and assume and we will play a part in this, in the comprehensive plan. And those include making sure that we're not creating pockets where all of the affordable housing and public housing in the city is in a couple neighborhoods, and then there are a couple neighborhoods that have none of it, because I think that's part of the problem that we're seeing. So I just wanted to reflect on that and say that we, or at least for myself, but I think us as a commission and the city council and the mayor have all intends to address this. And it would be nice to address it here, but I think that we're not going to get the best solutions here. And we are only delaying that a little bit. So I just wanted to reflect on that.
Thank you. Any further comments? Commissioner Sweets.
Thank you. I don't really have a problem with the motions. I don't, I don't, I don't know that they're necessary for me anyway, but before we get, I mean, I think we've gotten into the weeds a little bit just on this thing with height. And I just want to complement the plan overall. I think it covers many, many things. I'm really excited to see this kind of investment in this neighborhood. I think that there are a lot of problems that this can help solve, including the dangerous traffic situation on 55, you know, issues at bus stops, moving people faster and better in other ways. The economic development potential, I think, is really exciting. And while I think those other issues certainly are important, we've had a lot of talk about that. Just overall, I think this is great for this neighborhood. I've been on this commission just about two years, and this is the first real major investment that we've weighed in on on the north side since I've been doing it. And as a former north side resident and someone who has a great interest in that neighborhood, I just think it's terrific. So, thanks.
Can I second that?
Commissioner Magrino.
Just wanted to clarify. So the motion on the table right now on page 79, is it, you were just adding that sentence or were you replacing the first sentence in the?
I was just adding that sentence. If you'd like to make a complimentary motion, that's on you.
I, I mean, I think we can, I think we can still kind of accomplish the, I don't know, I just, I'm still really wary of putting a specific number in there, or a specific range, even three to four. So I don't know, but I don't think that I have the votes to change that. But I guess, so yes, I'll just make kind of general comments. But it is a very good plan. Plan's very good. It's very well prepared. I think this is something to, you know, emulate around the city as we have more transit station areas. And hopefully, these two trains will actually get built at some point in the next five years here. And I think we'll also have, you know, kind of a cool, maybe case study if the Homewood Historic District goes through and we have a train right there and sort of see what it does with housing prices and displacement in those two station areas. If we're kind of limiting development in one area and encouraging it in another, what it ultimately actually does with the areas around the stations will be something to watch.
Any further comments? Not seeing any, I guess I'd also echo some of the commissioners up here, really well-done plan. It's great to see it evolve and the commitment that you put into the effort. And also want to thank all the people who came out to testify tonight. I think affordable housing, gentrification are big issues that it sounds like we're dealing with as part of the comprehensive planning process. And so would hope that you would stay engaged in that process and continue to voice, you know, your opinions as it relates to those subjects. And hopefully, we can accommodate that as part of the planning process. So we have a motion that's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call Roll.
Kagan.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Sweets.
Aye.
Reland.
Aye.
Six zero.
That concludes item number nine, commission business. We have committee of the whole this Thursday, and I think that's it. So we are adjourned. Next planning commission regular meeting is December 4.